Good evening, everyone.
All right.
And welcome to the January 2014 meeting. Can you believe it's 2014 already? Where does time go? Would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Sue, would you call the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzing.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Langel. Patricia Madden. Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
And Karen Reincek.
Okay, Sue, has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. To those of you in our viewing audience and to those of you that are here tonight, I just want to let you know that I am serving as interim president since Dan Warren has resigned and moved out of state. So we will be appointing someone to take his place and we will then have an election soon after that for new officers. So until then, you're going to have to bear with me, but I know I can count on my fellow board members for support and help. And board members, I would just like to tell you that if you ever have any questions, concerns, or suggestions about something I can do better, would you just please let me know because we're a team and we work together and I want to be able to represent your feelings and opinions, okay? All right, moving forward then, thank you. We have bright lights tonight and we welcome Brenda Ness. Where's Brenda? Hi Brenda. And she has some students with her from South High School who share a very special, oh, very special accomplishment, U.S. citizenship. How wonderful. Brenda.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me here this evening and I'm honored to be here to introduce and I appreciate your recognition of three very amazing students from South and I'll have them come forward. Le Claire and Nana and Ler Pue Mu, if you could step forward because I'm going to talk a little bit about each of them and introduce them to you. So are we, I'm going to make sure you're in the camera view here, okay?
All right, so I don't know where that would be.
That's good, that's great. Okay, so these three South students, Nana, Le Claire, and Ler Pue Mu, their names have changed with the citizenship process and they could explain that if you'd like to hear about it. I know them in this way and I want to just tell you, they arrived in Waukesha just over five years ago as refugees and they began their education learning English at Central Middle School. And now fast forward to present and within the last six months, all three of them have finished the citizenship process, the naturalization process, the rather arduous citizenship process, testing and different kinds of things. So they are all new citizens, so with that they've decided upon some new names, so they will always be Nana, Ler Pue Mu, and Le Claire to me. So I also want to say that they're going to be graduating in June.
Oh, wow.
And they are all, Le Claire from the Engineering Academy, Ler Pue Mu from the Academy of Health Professions, and Nana from our wonderful South High School, straight South High School. And we, I also have to add that cumulatively together, I noted that all of their GPAs are above a 3.1.
Wow.
So they have done amazing. They've been accepted to colleges and we have career interests here in engineering and social work and early childhood education.
Oh, yes.
So those are some of what's going on. And so I just want to thank you again. These students are amazing young people. They have enriched our lives through the sharing of their refugee experience and their Karen culture with the students at South. And I also just have to say, they are amazing young people for their persistence, for their hard work, dedication in the face of overwhelming obstacles in many cases. So we are very proud of their accomplishments. I also have to just recognize in our audience tonight too, we have church sponsors, Joe Booth and Chris Desmond, without whose support, they would not be probably standing here with us today too. So we want to acknowledge the community work, the teamwork with the church, the school district, and then we just, these amazing young people, so.
Brenda, what country are these young people from originally?
Well, they were born, they could tell you, they're originally from Burma, but as Karen students, they fled from Burma to refugee camps in Thailand.
Thailand.
Were you all born in Thailand then in the camps?
Yes.
Yes, all born in the refugee camps in Thailand until they came here five years ago.
Wonderful.
So I'm not sure if you'd like to have them say anything or I'm just very proud of their accomplishments.
Yes, some board member want to make a suggestion?
I had a chance, a chance just to say hi to them out in the hall before the meeting and it was wonderful. And I guess I'd like to remind the board members, some of us, maybe all of us saw the DVD that was put together about their lives in Burma, Myanmar, their family and their families' lives over there and what they went through. And I think as an American citizen myself, to have learned about what you had to do to get to this day is just almost overwhelming and I congratulate you wonderfully.
Thank you.
Tell us briefly what your life was like in Myanmar before you fled and went to Thailand. Would one of you like to tell us? Because I'm not so sure that people understand why you fled and what your life was like before you fled. Could one of you tell us that?
Yeah.
Would you please step up to the microphone?
It would be right there.
Thank you, thank you so much. It's hard to speak in front of us, I know.
Well, really, we didn't fled because we just originally born in Thailand refugee camps. It is like our parents that had to flee the Burma and I can't talk about life in refugee camps. It is like hard and since there's no, back in the day, you know, no electricity, no telephone and stuff, you know, it is very hard. You had to walk to school, to get to the school and you had to study and no like computer resource and you had to research something, like you can't get it from the computer, Google, you know? And to get like everyday lives to started, everything had to be made, like had to start with hands, no machines to help like us out. And as a kid, you know, you had to go and get waters because water is one of the like important thing for life and it's not right in the kitchen. We had to go 10, 20 minutes to get the water and walking and to contain, storage the water, you had to go back three, four times and that's like over one hours. It's pretty hard to stay in, like to combine all of them together.
Wow. Any other board members' questions? Mr. Como.
First of all, congratulations on your citizenship to, you know, becoming citizens here in the United States. And this country is, you know, built upon people who came from different places in the world. And so you are just like them who first founded this country and the many people who have migrated to this country and have become citizens over the years. So that's what makes this country great, are people like you, people who have new ideas, people who want to be here and work hard. And obviously you all have worked hard because you'll be graduating from high school this June. One of the best things that we get to do as school board members is we get to present diplomas to you. And I always go to Waukesha South's graduation.
Me too.
I graduated back in 1980 from Waukesha South. I just was wondering if each of you could just briefly tell us where you're going to college and what you might like to study.
For me, I got accepted to U of U Stouts and I'm planning on going there and I'm planning to study mechanical engineering. Looking back at my past, it is like one of the thing that interests me the most and it will benefit a lot of people if I go in that career field. So that's one of my future career goals.
Excellent.
I have been accepted to several colleges, like a few colleges, but I want to go to Whitewater next year, next fall and my interest in education, the reason why I want to be in education field because that's like my interest since I live in camp since I was a little girl.
She cute.
Hi, my name is Mary now. Also, I got accepted to like several colleges that I applied to and I just made up my mind to attend the University of Wisconsin-Waukesha and then transferred to maybe Whitewater to get my bachelor degree and maybe I, I want in, at first I want to be a social worker, but then I just like changed my mind to education because I always wanted to help like people and I, after I get my bachelor degree, I would like to go back to the refugee camp and taught kids in the refugee camp.
Excellent, excellent.
Excellent, that's wonderful.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Wonderful. It's amazing that you've acquired the English language as well as you have in the short time that you've been here because I'm sure that if I went to Thailand or Myanmar, within five years, I know I would not be able to pick up your language as you, as well as you've picked up our language. So I need to compliment you on that. And as Mr. Como pointed out, most of us here have grandparents who came from Europe. And so we're, I'm only a second generation American and I'm proud of it. We're, so it's something to be proud of. That test that you took is very difficult and I'm not so sure that many of our students could take this test and pass.
For us.
That's a very good point.
It's a very difficult test, a lot about government and Congress and legislature. So congratulations on that and I'm just thrilled that you became United States citizens and I know that you are going to make a great contribution to yourself and to our country. So congratulations on becoming citizens.
Thank you.
Yes, somebody else want to ask a question? Karen?
Okay, so you are Mary.
Yes.
And did you choose your name? Did you get to pick an American name or why, why would you, how did it get to be Mary?
Well, when I live, I live in the camp. When I went to school, my name is Mary too, always. But then when we came here, my mom gave me the name Ler Pue Mu. So, so when I get my citizenship, then I changed it to Mary because I thought it would be like easier, but I still keep my name Ler Pue Mu like for my middle name. I still keep that name. So my name, my full name is Mary Ler Pue, I mean Mary Ler Pue Tuna. Yeah, I'm still have to get used to it.
And then what about the both of you?
Well, I kind of changed my name. My name is Nana, but the spelling is kind of different. So before I got my citizenship, my spell like, this is how you spell my name, N-E-N and then space N-E, that's a last name. So yeah, people keep calling me Nana and I kind of want a last name as a family name because like most of my family have a last name, that's two. So I take out one N and then put N-A, N-A together like to spell. And I have a family name to us and my last name, N-A is my last name and I have my mother name as my middle name. So my full name is Nana Le Watu.
And Le Claire, you didn't change?
No, I didn't get to take that citizenship.
Oh, yeah, right. You, right.
Yeah, my mom passed. Thanks to her.
So you were naturalized because of her, yeah.
And I, and I wanted to ask you, when you are, so are you going to the Engineering Academy or have you been?
I'm in the Engineering Academy. I'm going to Stouts. Is that what you mean?
Yes. So as you're, as you're doing all of the things that they do there, CAD and all that on the computers, you're doing that, right? Okay, so do you think of how to get water to your, the refugee camps? Do you think of ways that you can help back home, not just here?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of way that I think about it and since in the refugee camps, you know, you had to purify the water and stuff, since it's take longer process to do it. And in last month, in my class, in year class, we have a water purification project. So I was just researching and do studies and I came up with, you know, get the rocks that my dad told me about and that rocks can like purify the water quicker than using sand, grumbles and stuff. And I did pretty good. I got higher grades than most of my classmates and.
All right.
Wow.
It was amazing, you know? It was like to get the start off like learning how to become engineers and research projects. So in the future, I wish I can be better than that. Right now it's a starting steps and trying hard to do it.
Excellent, good job.
Amazing, amazing.
Good.
Yes, Mr. Edlin.
Thank you, Madam Acting President. I beg to just take a few more minutes on this topic.
Absolutely.
However, I'd like to hear from Joe and Chris this evening, the sponsors for these young adults, and hear how they're involved in this relationship with refugees.
Good suggestion, thank you, Mr. Edlin.
There's basically three churches in Waukesha that are involved in this and our numbers are dwindling. It's primarily Joe and I these days, but that's kind of the way these things go. But it's been nothing but rewarding. I mean, there's been a lot of struggles, but the kids make it all worthwhile, the parents are struggling to a certain extent, but last year, five of the families bought homes.
Wow.
So that was a big milestone and, so every year it's something else and this year we've got three graduates, so we're very proud of them. And Joe can really speak, she does a lot more than me, so go ahead.
Well, I helped work with the families for citizenship and that was really a fun thing. However, getting citizenship is very difficult.
Yes, it is.
It's a very convoluted process. They had to learn a lot of things about the United States government. There are questions on history, geography, and civics. And I would say too, like we said before, we wouldn't pass that test without a lot of study like they did. And we had 13 people from Waukesha, we have 80 people, I should mention that, we have 80 refugees of their Karen group in Waukesha. There are 28 kids in the school system here and all the parents have jobs, low paying, but they're working, so that's great. What did I start saying? I, oh, we got citizenship now for 13 people and a few of them have failed, but we're working on some more families and we've had a lot of classes, WCTC has a class. I got a Burmese woman to come and hold a class here so she could explain things in their language. And, well, it takes up a lot of time. I work eight and 10 hours every day on refugee stuff and different things.
She does.
Tomorrow I'll be at the hospital with somebody getting surgery. There's always something. The people at ER say, oh, who did you bring me today?
How did you get involved?
My church.
And how, what organizations your church involved with that would have made the connection to the refugee camps?
That was Lutheran Social Services. They and Catholic Charities are the two big resettlement agencies in Milwaukee and they try to get church people to help, churches to help with it. It used to be very expensive for churches to resettle people, but they changed the whole program now so that the United States government gives the refugees each about $1,200 to get them started. And before, the churches had to supply that, so it was really hard to get churches because you know how that is. Everybody has expenses. So now it's a little easier, but also things have gotten a little better in Burma. I don't know if you follow that news at all for in Myanmar. It is a little bit better and things are loosening up and so there aren't as many refugees coming anymore as there were in about 2005. Between 2005 and 2008, I would say was the big influx. The United States, Canada, and Australia are the big, the big takers. And some of the countries take a few, but those are the big ones. We take about 14,000 a year in the United States. They're all over the United States.
Are there still refugee camps over there?
Yes, they're all open. There's nine of them. If you look at Burma, it's kind of a long, narrow country.
Yes.
And there's a river and they run over, across the river, they get across the river into Thailand.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was Le Claire's parents said that when they were little, the kids were little, they put them under their arms and ran because the military government was shooting at them. We have one man who was a porter and for the military, he was totally had to carry their ammunition and they make them walk in ahead of the soldiers, so if there's a landline there, they get blown up instead of the soldiers. They all have stories like that to tell for parents.
I, I met someone, a student, about six or seven years ago at Meskego School District and he had some incredible stories to tell and share with the students. Now, do these students live in an urban area or were they living in the, in the back country?
Were you living in villages in the country or in the city?
Your parents.
Or your parents in Burma?
They don't.
Their life, their whole life was in the refugee camp, the camp.
Yeah, okay.
But I would say from what I've learned about families is that they all came from small villages.
Yes.
Farmers, they were farmers.
But these kids were never a citizen of any other country.
Uh-huh, right, right.
Because, so that's why this is so huge, that now they belong somewhere.
Yes, it is. And for the parents too, they so badly want to become citizens and belong somewhere because they weren't considered citizens in Burma. Thailand didn't consider them citizens in the refugee camp and then they come here and now it's so hard to get citizenship here.
Yes, yes, yes.
So they work very hard.
Yes. Well, they've made some incredible sacrifices, but like our ancestors did, you know, they came and they work hard to get ahead and these young people have that work ethic, I'm sure. That will make, help them be successful. Mr. Como.
I was just wondering if you have worked with Jeff and Bryn Kirk at all?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Also Mark back here.
And Mark, yes, absolutely. This is a pretty large number of people in our community who have worked. I'm sure you guys want more volunteers though to help out as it's kind of dwindled over the years. But Jeff wrote a book, 10 Million to One Refugee Resettlement, A How-To Guide. There's so much, there's so many steps into assimilating you into a new culture and to go through and to become a part of our culture. That's what Jeff was trying to capture in his book. And, you know, I just hope that that resource gets used by people such as yourself and you guys helped to build that book essentially by the things that you've learned to do because there wasn't a how-to book. How do you, what do you, how do you do all these things? How do you, how do you help someone who doesn't speak our language get a job here in the United States? Well, that's, that's pretty tough. How do you get them through high school? How do you get the students through high school? How, where do they live? You know, so on and so forth. There's just millions, clothes, you know, all of the things, all of the steps. So thank you for people like yourself who truly care and have really helped these students and their families get going. I don't know if anybody could ever thank you folks enough for what you've done to help these families too.
Well, Chris and I love them.
Obviously. So these, these kids were very young when their parents left Myanmar and went to Thailand, is that correct? So they have very.
They weren't born, they were born in the refugee camps, so they never lived in Burma.
Okay, so then they don't have any, you know, recollection of what life was like in Myanmar, okay.
I was at the refugee camps in Thailand and the buildings that they live in, the houses, are made out of bamboo with leaves for roofs, so it's quite different.
In the refugee camps?
Yes, in the refugee camp.
But was that not similar to the way they lived in the small villages?
It is, yes.
Yes, that's what I understand. And, you know, of course they ate differently and dressed differently, is that, is that correct? Okay. Karen?
Ler Pue Mu has a dress on.
I noticed that.
Yeah, it's pretty.
And I think you have one or two under there hiding under your shirt.
Is her dress a significant of something?
Well, it's just a type of thing that they wear every day. Now hers looks really nice.
Not so much the ankle boots and stuff.
No, no.
Is that a cultural thing, that dress?
It's a tropical country and so that is a cool weather, I mean a warm weather kind of outfit, yeah.
Interesting.
So they had to get used to winter too, you know?
Yes, of course.
Can I ask about that?
Ms. Reincek.
Thank you. How, how have, can we do anything here more? How are we taking care of your needs? I know Brenda is so proud of you. Is there anything else that we can do? And because, I don't know, maybe five million people are watching, no, I'm just kidding, there might be like three. But if, if anyone's listening, what can they just, their heart is moved, is there anything that they can do as well? So starting with us, is there anything that we can do more for you?
Nothing comes to my, Joe and I both feel that they've just gotten an excellent start in their education. Central, middle, and I'm blanking out at the teachers. Who are your teachers at Central? They were so great to you.
Mrs. Hunsinger.
Tulpe, yeah, Hunsinger.
And Brenda Ness is just absolutely wonderful.
Yes, she is.
She has done so many things for enhancement for these kids. She's just wonderful.
She is.
And then anybody that's listening, is there anything?
Call Joe Booth, she'll, she'll put you to work.
Well, we, we take donations of furniture and clothes and now that they're working, they are able to buy some things that they know Goodwill store really well.
So, so when they, when they get their home.
Scholarship contributions would be great. These kids are going to have some expenses. They'll get some scholarships, but I don't know how much either.
So when they are able to get their apartment or their home, they pretty much need kitchen table, chairs, beds, dresses, all of that?
We get donations from the churches, yes.
Okay.
Or the Hope Center.
So if someone wants to contact you, where can they find you?
Well, I don't know. How, how do I tell you that?
What church do you belong to?
Ascension Lutheran Church.
Okay.
Saint Bartholomew's Episcopal Church.
Okay.
And Galilee Lutheran Church and Peewaiki.
Those are the three churches.
Great.
Thank you, very interesting.
That's helpful.
Very good, thank you.
That's helpful. Well, thank you for all you've done for these young people. I mean, you've made such a difference in their lives and helping them acclimate themselves to a foreign country, so bless you and thank you very much and best wishes to you young people for lots of success.
I would like to say a few words, thank you for your words.
Please do.
First, I would like to thank you guys for inviting us to be here today and it was, it was really wonderful to be here and thank you for inviting us again. And I would also like to thanks Joe Booth and Chris like to be here too and for helping us to like the whole process since we've been here in the United States and now. And I know it will never stop at helping us in the future. And thank you to all the churches that they mentioned before too for helping our family and they did their best like to help us and we're really thankful. Thank you. And I would also thank you Mrs. Ness, thank you very much for helping us like throughout the whole process. And without her, I don't know what like, what would we be right now, maybe we would maybe like get accepted to colleges yet and we'd be like very late and thank you very much.
Amazing, just amazing.
And she will keep working with us. And she will keep working with us through the colleges, and thank you. And if not because of Joe, we wouldn't be here today, and we wouldn't be, like, a citizen of the United States either. Because of her, we're, like, we're really blessed. Thank you.
I'd like to point out, Le, Toclaire's sitting over here. Oh, by the way, these are all cousins.
Oh, for heaven's sake. Oh, they're all related, then, I'm like.
Toclaire graduated from South last year, and he is in the firefighter program at WCTC.
Wonderful.
And he is a citizen also.
Wonderful. Very good. Any more questions or comments?
No.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving forward, then we have recognitions from North High School.
No, actually, I think that is, that refers to the student representative.
Oh, okay. So we have student representatives from North High School, and that's Adam Cool. My old buddy, Adam.
Well, I don't have as cool of a story as that, but I do have some great things to share about North. I think, do we have a video to share first? Okay, yeah, we'll start out with that. So I don't have Maura today, as you guys can see. RC's obviously graduating off to college. So Maura spoke with us in the fall, but she's not here today, and she made a little video for us.
Hi, I'm Maura Flanagan, and I'm a junior at Waukesha North. And the reason I am unable to make it to this meeting tonight is due to the cold days last week. We had to reschedule our band concert for tonight. And I thought it'd be a great idea to use the iPad. With the iPads this year, in the beginning, people had a hard time adjusting, but now people are well adjusted, too. You need to be doing schoolwork during class. And teachers are even incorporating it more. For example, social media, a lot of teachers are using Twitter in case a student has questions, and Facebook with a group page for AP classes if students wanted to ask questions of each other. Going along with music, North is putting on the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee as our music, winter musical this year. It's a very funny musical made for friends and family, and it's about a group of ten- and twelve-year-olds trying to get to our national spelling bee. Very well, North Star Tribune had its first issue back in December. And the next issue should be coming out early February, our Valentine's Day issue. And speaking of new activities, two new activities are starting up at North. Forensics, which is a public speaking team, and once again, Strut Your Stuff, which is when Waukesha North, West, South, and KM get together and we're having a clothing drive. This year is for Salvation Army. So this year, for perfect attendance, all of the people who had gotten perfect attendance this year were entered into a drawing to win a twenty-five-dollar gift card, and a winner from each grade was chosen. This was sponsored by the WCTC's North Star Fund. Thank you so much for your time and your attention, and I'm extremely sorry that I couldn't make it tonight. But as you're watching this, I will be playing percussion. Thank you.
Nice. So that's Maura for you guys. I just want to say, it's kind of crazy. It's been almost three years that I've been speaking here. So I kind of feel like I've grown a couple inches, and it's really cool. I mean, this will be my second-to-last time speaking, so obviously, thanks again. We do have some great stuff to share. Sports have been doing really well, and we couldn't be prouder of our athletes, and of course, our super fans at every single game. Most recently, the boys' basketball team, along with our rock star coaching staff, hosted the NBT Winter Snow Jam National Tournament over the holiday break. It brought in teams from across the country, including a great win by our boys over Destiny High School from Milwaukee. The girls' basketball team as well will be having their upcoming Pink Out game on February twenty-fourth, along with several different fundraisers leading up to the event, all raising money for breast cancer. Throughout the year, our teams have always prided themselves on community outreach, and it is something that we are very proud out, proud of at North. Now on to hockey. We do want to congratulate Nor, a North freshman, actually, Logan Geisness, who's on varsity for hockey, it's the three high schools, West, South, and North. And he was nominated for the Wiz Sports Athlete of the Week. So those are, they recognize students from across the state, and it's four that get voted on, and he was one of the four that were nominated. It's very impressive recognition because he is only a freshman and on varsity hockey, so we are very proud of him as well. Although the numbers for boys' swimming are a little lower this year, the team led by Kyle Beddallov is putting up some impressive numbers, including a four-to-one dual meet portion of the season. The team has only five weeks left and is looking forward to not only sending, or to sending swimmers to the state championships in Madison, but also scoring some more points on improving their great finish from last year. Something new that our new athletic director, Mr. Brian Schley, is working on is the Athletics Advisory Council. It's kind of like a spin-off of what our principal's advisory council with Ms. Landish has been doing. It's obviously a newly developed leadership group for student athletes, and has started meeting on a monthly basis, Mr. Schley, on how to get students more involved in bettering our programs and getting the opinions of students, because obviously, sometimes that does get overlooked. This does also include our new fitness center, which we received twenty-five thousand dollars in new equipment that was just recently installed. It was purchased with money that we got from a Muscle Milk grant that Booster Club won last, last year. Well, sports also have been busy. So have many of our clubs. DECA just had their district competition last weekend, and will be sending a group of six students competing in a variety of events at their state competition. FBLA will also be having their regional competition, where myself, along with other students, will be competing for the chance to advance to state. I would also like to mention in the video, and I don't have this in my notes, I'm gonna kind of improv it, the Strut Your Stuff Fashion Show, it's, it's really cool. I'm doing some of the media and helping out with, like, the PR stuff, just because I guess I'm kind of good at talking here and there. But last year, we raised over three thousand dollars and collected over five thousand articles of clothing that went to the Hope Center, that obviously helps people that were just speaking. And it, it included Waukesha South, Waukesha North, Waukesha West, and Kalamurane. I don't think any group or organization or anything has ever connected those four schools and done something that huge. And I realize, I don't think I've ever mentioned in one of our speeches before, but it is something that's very big. And this year, we're looking at raising over five thousand dollars and collecting over ten thousand articles of clothing. The Salvation Army also donated an entire office space in downtown Waukesha. We will be collecting our clothing. I wish I had the address so I could tell you guys, but, because there's also bins out there. We're collecting clothes, and then there, it's put on by Astro Moscow and Gabby Lascano, who want to go to fashion school. So they're gonna be picking out different outfits and clothes that are donated, and then making the outfits on our models that will be selected later on in a couple months, and then fashioning it off at our fashion show at the Waukesha Civic Theater on April fourth and April fifth. So I'll make sure to get more information to you guys about that and about donating, because it is really cool and something that all high schools should be proud of. FBLA and DECA have also recently worked together before Christmas break to raise money for some North families who are in need. From different efforts by the entire school, we raised over three thousand dollars and helped twenty-five North families from our North Star Fund. So it's another thing that we are proud of, and its success would not be impossible with support of students, staff, and their families. And all the money that we raised went right back to North Star families and helped them with paying off bills, helping with Christmas gifts, whatever they needed. They just would need to contact our Student Services, and then we would help them out. So it's really cool. Key Club has also been very busy and is concurrently preparing for their upcoming Polar Plunge. For the next couple of weeks, they'll be raising money to get students, along with one of our guidance counselors, to take the plunge in freezing water. All the money being raised is going to the Special Olympics. And I don't know about you guys, but jumping in freezing cold water in the winter doesn't sound very fun, but it is obviously for charity, of course. I don't know, maybe we should all just go back, go down to Florida with Mr. Ward and take that plunge. Wouldn't that be nice? Adding on more to what Maura had talked about in the video, we noticed that last time we spoke, several of you wanted more updates on the one iPad, one-to-one iPad technology. Hopefully, at the end, you guys will ask me some questions, how it's been going. But from my personal observations, I've been noticing a lot more students and teachers becoming adaptable, starting to realize that we're not going back to the old way. We've got to move forward, be more competitive in the market, and that we've been using the technology more to its optimal performances. And wild distractions are still very evident, and that's something that's obviously being talked about probably at every technology meeting. What do we do with students who are on social media, who are playing Angry Birds and whatnot? I was talking to a teacher today, and they said, it's getting, it's getting better, and it's obviously gonna take time. It's not like you snap your fingers and just put an iPad in every kid's hand, and then they're gonna know how to use it right away. So it is a learning curve, and it's something that North is excited to be the pioneer for, and then hopefully have it rolled out to other schools. When some students, like myself, have a free period or release, we can now take a break in our Idea Center. It is a newly constructed learning center with students in mind, and has couches, lounging chairs, beanbags, and even two exercise bikes. It's been a great addition to North. We have also been constructing a coffee shop with the help of many teachers and students who are very interested in having just this idea become a reality. We want to turn some of these traditional learning environments, such as our library, into a more welcoming environment. And I think that's all I have for you guys today. Thank you very much, and if any questions that you guys may have?
Mr. Baumgart.
I want to help Adam and add something to what he said, because you were talking about your Waukesha One program. And about a month ago, I attended, Jody and staff have been doing some tours for us to get to, and I don't know if anybody else has been there from the board, but if you can get to one of those tours, it really is worth the visit. And I think her next one is scheduled for about a week from Friday or something like that.
I think that's two of our students, Spencer and Lauren, have been sitting in a couple of those meetings.
Yes, and, and I tell you what, and you can thank them, too, for, the, the response we get from those students that are helping with those tours is really eye-opening in a posit, in a positive way. So number one, the way we've rolled out Waukesha One is, is, is the correct way. And the feedback that we got from North as one of the first schools to do it, and to help us even improve the process for, for the next waves of rollouts has been, it really came from the students, and appreciate that very much. So if you get a chance to visit one of those tours that Jody has set up over there, I really strongly suggest that it's worthwhile.
Thank you for that, Mr. Baumgart.
I, I'd like to just add, recently at my last Superintendent's Advisory Committee, I had two other North students there talking about their experiences with the iPad in a couple of different classes. And, and I asked them, do you feel that with the iPad, students are reading more? Not necessarily technical material, but reading just because it's, it's available and it's convenient? And I'm gonna ask Adam the same thing. Do you feel that?
Reading material regarding the class?
Any, anything, just reading?
Well, I guess, I don't know. Well, I'm a news junkie, so I guess I'm, it's funny. All the time in my AP Government class, which I'm obviously very involved in government and the political process, my teacher, if my, I remember on my iPad, when I was supposed, my teacher would yell at me, and I'd be like, hey, I'm reading like Politico.com or CNN. So, yeah, it, it does, you're very more, you're always in there. You're always on the iPad, you're always knowing what's happening, whether it's for the positive or the bad. It's, it's easier to get access to material, whether it's regarding a class, whether it's regarding the news. Yeah, the accessibility is a lot easier.
So you, from your experience and those of your, the students, you know, you feel that there is more reading going on with the use of the iPads?
And obviously, with textbooks, it's gonna take a couple more years to move over, but that's something that we'll have to look forward to.
Well, Adam, now that you're a senior, and you've been very, very involved in politics, what does a few of your hold for you?
Hopefully, Marquette is what I'm looking at. And I should be getting a letter any day now. So, and I know, Mr. Gray, your son, your son's won some Marquette, so.
Certainly glad to help along with that.
Your Marquette alone, too? Awesome.
So am I. And so what are you gonna?
I don't think we can do you any good.
And what are you gonna major in, or don't you know yet?
Probably economics, and then hopefully go on, do more school, so. Because I don't, I, I don't know what I want to do exactly. All depends on.
You'll find your way.
Where life takes me.
Well, it'll certainly take you into politics.
Yeah, well, maybe.
You've been so involved, it's just amazing for a young, young student your age, how involved you've been in politics, and I really admire that. Mr. Edlin.
I gotta bring up a concern.
Yes.
With the iPads, have you noticed a change in, a cultural change in student interaction? In other words, we hear now that, that students are like this, you know, way too often with their electronic devices and not engaging socially. Do you see that as a problem? Do you see that happening? Do you, what's your observations?
I don't know, it's kind of, it would be, it's kind of confusing because it all depends on what situation we're in. Obviously, we're like all on Twitter and like always updating and stuff. That is, I don't, I don't technically think that we are like, like, it's not like we don't do face-to-face conversations anymore, but there is a lot more being on the iPads for Twitter, social media, Facebook, and so on. I don't think, during times when we have to, like, we have free time or not, I do, sometimes students don't use that time, let's say in the class, like, when the teacher gives us thirty minutes to do our homework. Sometimes students take that advantage to play games on their iPads, go on social media, and not technically do their work. And that's obviously something that I think needs to change with the mentality of students, because we are the generation of technology. I don't think, I mean, see, we're the only ones who've experienced this, and it's kind of hard to explain to adults how that is our life. Like, things are always changing. Like, if you don't check Twitter within six hours every day, the whole world could have collapsed, and we wouldn't even know it, but if we checked Twitter, we would know it. So, I don't know, I don't think it's technically changed, but I feel like we, it may change in the future. Because we are obviously getting more technology in front of us and on, on an iPad way more.
Much more informed in current events.
Yes, that's true.
Okay, anything else? Well, thank you, Adam. Pleasure to see you again, and best wishes for the rest of the school year.
Thank you guys very much.
And thank your partner.
We're looking forward to seeing you one more time.
What? Oh, yeah, I know, thanks my part.
Thank your partner.
I will. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we've now, at the section of our board meeting where there is an opportunity for citizens to speak, and it has been past practice, each individual will be limited to two to three minutes time in order to speak to the board. And, Mr. Beck Affery, would you please signal when it's two and a half minutes?
I sure will.
In order that we can, that the speaker can wrap up the comments. And of course, we expect the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. And also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker tonight is Paul Reese. Paul, would you please come forward?
Good evening, Paul Reese, Eight Forty-One Genesee Street, Waukesha, Wisconsin. I want to read something from Proverbs nine, verse eight. "Do not rebuke a marker, or he will hate you; rebuke a wise man, and he will love you." Last month, when I left here, I don't think I was ever so angry leaving here as I was last month. When you guys gave yourself a raise and then added on to it, made an amendment that no one had a chance to, to respond to, was, was folly. Mr. Como, you talked about being an entrepreneur. Would you do business with someone if they offered you a good or a service and you gave time to sit down and sign the papers, and they raised their price by fifty percent? Would you continue to do business with that person? And if the answer be no, why should I continue to vote for you? I mean, I, I was not, I was quite appalled by that. And what would be the difference between if you were at this Board of Education, where they say, we want to give ourselves a thirty-dollar-a-year raise? No one would show up, no one would come in to say anything. And then when it came time, it went through committee, and they asked, well, through the certain processes it goes through, you came in and said amend it, and said, I meant thirty thousand dollars a year. Well, done, you know? There is no difference besides a decimal point in what you did. I, I, I was absolutely appalled by it. I, I never went, I was so in favor of something, because I, I, I supported you, made your case. I know the work the Board does. I was in favor of it. And I never turned to being opposed to something so quickly as I did last month. You had no right to do that. You have no right to amend it upward. I don't mind, and I wish if I could go to, I think I'm gonna go to the Rules Committee, and I'd like to see an amendment made, a rule made, that raises like this cannot be amended upward. They may be amended downward, but not upward. Because that is absolutely ridiculous. What stops you from doing something? You know, from just making up whatever amount you want to. Why have the process of going through a committee when you're just gonna change it when it comes time for a final vote? It, it, it makes no sense to me. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Paul. All right, let's get on with the rest of the meeting. It's time for minute approval. And minutes for approval are from the December 11th, 2013, the regular board meeting and December 16th, 2013, executive session expulsion panel. Could we please have a motion, Mr.?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second, okay. So it moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All right, Sue, would you call the roll?
Joseph Como?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Thank you. We're a little short tonight. You know, we changed our regular board meeting from last week to this week and so our board members had other commitments. Communications?
We have none this evening.
Okay. Safety committee report. Mr. Baumgart.
Safety committee meeting in January was, to be held last week, was canceled because of the weather at the time and will be held again, I mean, we'll hold one again in February.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a charter school report?
Charter school report. Going along with what we talked about last month, it'll be much shorter than it has been in the past, but you will get a packet, in your packet, excuse me, on Friday, you will get some of the other things, the details about some of the programs. Regarding the Engineering Academy and the Health Academy, we had a meeting, Ryan, Todd was there, I was there, Dan was there, oh, two, three months ago, where we talked about the future of those two schools and one of the things we've pointed them to do was to begin repurposing the school or rebranding the school as to what they're really about and to establish real governance boards over there. And I'm happy to report for both of the schools, the Engineering Academy has taken a look at revitalizing the governance board, has reached out to the engineering community and added a number of wonderful people to the board. You will be getting a copy of the new members of the governance board in that packet. It looks like it's going to be a very strong board. They have also taken a look at the four-year coursework that they're expecting their students have unidentified some new avenues for the students to best meet their wants and their needs. First governance board meeting for the Engineering Academy will be next Wednesday. Health Academy likewise has secured a governance board for the academy that will be meeting either the second or third Wednesday of each month, beginning in the month of February. Again, you'll get a list of those people. It is a little bit tentative at this time, but you will be getting a list on Friday as to most of the names. And some wonderful participation by our community. And they also are looking at the coursework to make sure that it meets the needs of the students. The only other thing I want to report on is quite simply the status of the project change, transition. You received a complete update on that in your packet last week. And that concludes my charter school report for the evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Baumgart. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Baumgart? Okay. Next, we have approval of annual expulsion resolution. Jen Wimmer, Jen?
State law requires that the board review their resolution annually. And we want to adopt a resolution to be able to use a panel versus a full school board to conduct our expulsion hearings. The resolution should be renewed by the board each year, so we would continue to bring it forward. The resolution does require board action. You'll see some shifts. This is something that you've approved in the past. The resolution changes just spell out and are more formally articulate the ability to run with a quorum of two, should there be an absence. That was not previously in the resolution.
So you're saying we can run with a quorum of two?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Barbara?
Yes.
I will be making the motion.
Okay.
State law requires the board to adopt a resolution and be able to use a panel versus a full board to conduct expulsion hearings on an annual basis. We must renew that resolution. We'll bring this resolution, we do bring it forward, as Jen said, each year. I therefore move for the adoption of the resolution as presented.
Is there a second, please? Second, Mr. Como? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the annual expulsion resolution. Any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Como.
Yeah, I, this format that we've used in the past of panels has worked well, having three people or two people. And if one don't, doesn't show up, has worked very well. Can you imagine holding expulsion? Bill, maybe you were?
I can remember when all nine of us sat in on all expulsions. And of course, everybody has to say something in a situation like that. And they went all night.
I think they're more efficient. I think they're better for the student and families involved and the administration. So I think this is extremely effective way of handling this process, so.
And I like the idea that we all take turns so that, you know, we have different people, different perspectives, so, thank you. All right, Sue, Karen?
Thank you. Having, having only two people, what happens if there's, if they don't agree?
It's a good question. You mean with the recommendation from the administration about the expulsion?
Right, I mean.
Is that what you're referring to, Karen?
Yes, or just, I mean, what they come up with, one doesn't agree with the other. One thinks it should be a year, the other one thinks it should be two years, you know. However, that's why the three work.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering, what do you do in that case?
Never happened.
You'd have to come up with a compromise that evening. You'd have to come up with something that works for both. Because I don't think you can continue to extend those. There are certain timelines. So the two-member panel would have to, at some point, come up with some kind of compromise agreement.
Yeah, and if they weren't able to come up with a compromise and it was a 1-1 vote, the expulsion would not occur because you would have to have a majority, so.
Eventually, it would go to the whole board.
That's right.
And then it may, something may occur, but that evening, I mean, ideally, there'd be a compromise vote that both members would be able to agree on. But it could then go to the full board if, if there was that kind of deadlock.
Good question, Karen. It's never happened before, but that's not to say that it won't, won't come up. So thank you for asking that question. Okay, roll, please.
Steve Edlin?
Before we vote?
Yes.
Should we amend language to reflect that in the policy?
It's in the resolution.
It's a resolution, yeah.
The language is in the resolutions.
I mean, for clarification on the event, event of a tie vote, that it would go to the full board.
I see.
That, that is, that's a function of law. I mean, for example, if you look at your closed session, you have that, every, every month, we put on that ability to go into closed session. And then if we don't need it, we, we just, we just bypass it. But that will always be on the agenda so that in the event that would happen, it would then go to this, to the next board meeting. So regardless of whether it's in this, this particular resolution or not, it would happen anyways by, by a function of law.
Would we have to hold another hearing?
Not necessarily. No, the, the board would deliberate it in this closed session. If there's something, for example, in any of the panels, even if it's a 3-0 vote and, and other board members are in disagreement, you could still bring that into closed session and then the entire board would have to, to discuss it and then vote at that point. If no one has an issue with, with what the panel has done, it just, it goes as it is. So there is a few things that are built in, even though it may not be in this particular language, that, that would allow any board member to bring forth an issue with, with any prior expulsion.
And Mr. Edlin, we, every time there is a expulsion panel that has occurred before a monthly meeting, we always add to other business adjourned to executive session per Wisconsin state statutes to review actions of expulsion panel. And that's if needed, so that's just automatically built into our agenda. Does that help?
It does. I, I would assume that if we went into closed-door session, it would to be, it would to be to come to a resolution.
That's exactly what it's for, yeah.
Right.
Not a review, but.
Well, it's, it's a review and then ultimately the whole board would vote on that. We had a situation two years ago where there were some concerns. And before we could convene in a, in a board meeting, the student moved out of state and it became moot, so there was nothing we could do about it. But that, that would have been a good test case, but unfortunately, I guess, we didn't have to act on it because the student moved, so.
I want to say about 10 years ago, we actually had, and Barb, you served on that panel with me, we had a no. We did not.
Yes.
And we actually went into, during that full board meeting afterwards, we had a closed session to talk about why, what, what happened there. And I think we still even voted on that in the consent, in the consent agenda, but we just went into closed session afterwards to, to talk about it, so.
So what you're saying, Joe, is that there was a time when we did not agree with the recommendation of the administration. I do recall that.
But even, so, so there's multiple ways for us to talk about the various scenarios and what could potentially happen. So and really, it's the state laws that dictate the majority of what we can do.
And especially the timelines we have to follow as well.
All this, the purpose of this resolution before us is just to say we're not going to have every board member in every expulsion hearing.
Right.
And that we're going to break it up into panels. So that's the only purpose of this resolution.
Okay.
Or solution, a resolution.
Just to confirm, it's not our intention to run with two, but barring an emergency, again, as Todd was saying, we're bound by very strict timelines. So that we're not putting ourselves out of compliance, that we would have that ability. This board is wonderful to work with in substituting for each other and making those timelines work. We would make every attempt to, to have a full panel with us.
Very true. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, Sue, roll call, please.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye. Motion passes. My goodness, we've got such a small attendance tonight. Six, zero. All right, it's time for our consent agenda. Laurie Clifton will, will report on the gifts received. Laurie?
We have three gifts to report this evening. A total of $500 was given by the Southminster Presbyterian Church to Whittier Elementary School. This gift will be used by the social worker to purchase clothes, shoes, and school supplies for those families in need. We received a total of $1,500 from, that was donated by Eric and Susan Blum to the Waukesha Transition Academy for various activities for the sale program. And finally, we received $1,500 that was given by Paul and Kathleen Omen to Central Middle School to purchase technology supplies for the math and science classrooms.
Thank you, Laurie. Mr. and Mrs. Omen are very generous people. It seems that they, they donate something almost every month, they donate every month.
They've been great supporters.
Yes, they are. Okay, thank you for that. Your agenda includes the categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Included in the items for approval are the decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on December 16th, 2013. A confidential communication regarding the details of this expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with minutes included under item number 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay, hearing done. Mr. Edlin will now present the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of four resignations, two retirements, and two new contracts. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed on your desk. Mrs. President, I remove, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Any questions, discussion? Okay, Sue, would you call the roll, please?
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
And Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Motion passes, six, zero. Superintendent's report. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. First of all, I, I put information at your desk on the board vacancy process. I know there have been some questions on that. But I just, I cited our board policy and the state statutes, so we know what we're doing going forward. We've prepared an ad for the Saturday Freeman that will run, that will encourage people to apply for these positions. Again, once we know how many applicants we have, we will then schedule interviews. And, and we don't have the interview date in the ad because if we have one or two interviews, obviously that's one night. But if we have 30 of them, then that may take a couple of nights to, to accomplish. And so, once we get that information, we will inform the applicants of the, the time and date of their interview. But all, all must be interviewed. You can have different rounds. You might want to do a, a fewer questions at first and then have a, have a second round where to narrow it down. That is certainly permissible. And then at some point, the board will convene and, and vote on that particular, on an applicant. If there are no applicants or no ones that meet criteria, then we would have to, again, go out with an ad and, and do the process over again. Throughout this, I've, I've been in contact with Gary Roosh and he's kind of given me some guidance to make sure that we are following state statutes in this particular process. Snow days or cold days, we had two of them last week. One does not have to be made up. The one on Tuesday does have to be made up. And any future snow days from this point on will have to be made up. So we're going to be watching that very, very carefully. And again, you know, I don't want to put any students at risk or in any safety situations. But each day now that we call has to be tacked on at some other point during the year. We do have some all-day staff development days, which, which then, of course, those, those have to be made up. So there's no, no easy choices from, from this point on.
Todd, what's the state law now on how many, how many eyeball days do we have to have with teachers and students in front of them?
Well, it's, it goes by hours now, hours and minutes.
It's not, it's not 180 days.
We have enough of those, or we did have enough of those. Now that we're, we're losing, we lost Tuesday, we, we don't, and so that will have to be made up.
Okay, so it's no longer 180 days, it's hours?
It's, it's hours and you, I mean, you have to have a, you have a minimum number of days in there. But, but you can go below the 180 as long as you have enough instructional time.
Thank you.
Elsewhere. Okay. Next week, our state education conference is in Milwaukee. And again, I know some of the board has signed up, but if there is remaining interest in going, Sue can sign you up. You can sign up actually the day of, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and, and attend at that particular time. Also, next week marks the end of our first semester and I thought we've had a very, very good first semester and hopefully our second will, will go just as well. A couple of things at your table. This is our recruiting brochure for, for our manufacturing automotive design engineering program. And you remember when, when Brian White was here, he said, you know, you need to, to shine this particular light. So this is just the first step in what we're doing there. We do have a brochure that we will also be using with our various manufacturing companies and other businesses in order to, to generate some, some interest in, in apprenticeship programs and work-study programs. But this, this will go to our middle school students with a letter, letting them know of the program and, and the possibilities that are out there. And I, I presented this to the Waukesha County Business Alliance Board this morning and everyone was favorably impressed on, on where we're going with this. The other brochure at your desk is, is a one-page, it's, it's the business class that the board recently approved in December. It gives a little bit of background. Again, this is being done as a recruiting tool for this particular class. If this class has tremendous amount of interest, we look at developing a, a school or a program around this. And, and I honestly believe that my discussions over the past couple of years will, will suggest that it will be popular. And I think a, a program will be forthcoming for that, if not a separate magnet school or charter school. Speaking of charter schools, last Friday, I, I presented information on Assembly of the Bill 549. And of course, it, it has some very, very stringent requirements on charter schools, which would actually put us out of the charter school business completely. And with that particular law, it's highly unlikely that, that another independent source would be able to come in and, and take over those particular schools, especially STEM, which are standalone schools. However, I, I have heard from two prominent senators, I heard from Senator Luther Olson's office, that. that there's not a lot of support on the Senate side for that particular bill as written. Doesn't mean there won't be some charter, independent charter law coming forth, but not one that dismantles our current charter school in the state. We actually have 243 charter schools in the state, and I don't think there's any interest at the legislative level, at least the Senate level, to dismantle those. And then, Mrs. Reinacek and I both heard from Paul Pharoah today on a nice letter stating the concerns he had with Assembly Bill 549 and the fact that something may go forth, but not in that format. So I'm breathing a little bit of sigh of relief here that we're going to be able to maintain our charter schools. However, I'm going to monitor this, and we may, in February, we may look at extending the contracts. Most of those are, have a year or less to go anyways, and this might be a great time to get those contracts renewed. You know, again, as Mr. Baumgart noted, good things happening with the two academies itself. Obviously, our two STEM schools are going strong, the Harvey Phillips and so on. So maybe it's time to look at that and make sure that we are protecting those. The other issue is E-Achieve. That has to be a charter school in order to collect open enrollment tuition. That cannot be a magnet school. So that one is a prime concern, and that contract runs out at the end of this year. So I've asked some folks to take a look at that and start generating what it might take to get those tied down, at least for the next three to five years, so that maybe we can get through this. I'm not quite as worried about the situation as I was yesterday. We received the information from Senator Pharoah today and a very, very positive outlook on that. So I just wanted to let everyone know where that's at and that, you know, we will still be watching this very closely. And finally, the last issue is, on policy tonight, you have on item three, this is the form. It's not stated that, but this is the form that Jen Wimmer prepared that corresponds to that third resolution. So, and Jen can speak to that when it comes time to.
Okay.
With that, that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we'll move into the committee section. First, we'll have finances and facilities. Mr. Como.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Last month, as you recall, Mr. Warren gave me a really hard time for a long report. So I took that to heart, and I only have one action item tonight and one information item. Our action item tonight is the approval of the budget transfers and amendments. We do this a couple of times throughout the year. The committee received a combination of budget transfers and amendments to the original board-adopted budget per Wisconsin statute 65.90 parent five. Transfers move existing budgets from one source or function to another without changing the overall total budget. Amendments change the total budget by increasing or decreasing an existing budget or adding a new budget item. The net effect on the general fund revenue from the budget amendments was increased by $1,597,108 as a result of grants and the inclusion of the last Apple lease. The general fund expenditure amendments were a direct result of the revenue changes increasing total expenditures by $1,597,108. The net effect for Fund 21 amendments increased revenues and expenditures by $15,352, each to account for additional grants and gifts. The net effect of the changes to Fund 27 reduced revenues and expenditures by $326,634, each as a result of a reduction in special education transportation budget. And then finally, Fund 50 revenues and expenditures were increased by $15,710 due to the amendment for a new fruit and vegetable grant. The committee approved the budget transfers and amendments as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second, please? Second by Mr. Edlin. Any questions? Comments? Would you tell me a little bit more about that fruits and vegetables business that's going to be going on at one of our schools?
I'm going to toss that over to Laurie for those details.
We received a grant, and I believe it's Central Middle School this year, that it's through Sodexo.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's through the Department of Agriculture, I believe, and Sodexo administers it for us. And it provides fresh fruits and vegetables for the students at that school for snacks.
And how has that been received by the students?
Very well.
Really?
We typically have one to two sites each year that have this program.
Oh, that's great. So they're eating the fruits and vegetables. Is this at lunchtime or is this at other times during the day that it's available?
I believe it's following up on the lunch.
Okay.
I can speak to that. I was at a school that had that. It's generally fresh fruits and vegetables delivered around the afternoon time. So at elementary, it was right around the two o'clock period.
Oh, okay, like a milk break.
I would assume it would be a little bit afternoon for them as well.
So it's at a different time other than lunchtime?
And it gives students an opportunity to try something they might not be exposed to at home.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
So it's, you know, a nice presentation, and it's just a way to get kids involved and try something new.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, would you call the roll, please?
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
And Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. Information items.
Yes, we just have one. We're looking at the monthly budget report. The committee received the monthly budget report for activity through December 31 of 2013. $13,744,367 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $8,339,755 was expended during the month of December. $1,060,124 was reported in special education revenues, and $1,972,42 was expended for special education. The district still is in line with the cash flow projections and borrowing needs. And that concludes my report.
Any questions?
Wonderful. I think that is a new record for me, isn't it? I didn't lie to you guys.
That's probably your first prize. You win the first prize. Okay, curriculum instruction. I'm the curriculum instruction chair, and the CNI meeting that was scheduled for January 7 was canceled due to the weather. The next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 4, and at that time, we'll pick up any items that we didn't get to discuss at our January meeting. Okay, HR committee, Mr. Edlin.
No further reports.
Okay. Policy committee. Pat Madden is not here this evening, so I'm going to take her place. There are action items. Revisions to policy number 5128, student scholarships, and 5128G guidelines for student scholarships. The revisions in both these policies include updates to groups protected from discrimination based on the outcome of a DPI Civil Rights Corrective Action Plan. I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions?
Yeah. The, Ellen isn't here, so I'm going to raise the question, I think, on her behalf. But the issue she presented dealt with the sentence that had to do with any gender-restricted rewards, blah, blah, blah. And I thought, you know, and I understand that the state worded it that way, but I thought our concern as a board was not strictly a sentence that dealt with gender restriction, but the fact that we are not dealing with color, national, origin, the other restrictions. And by simply saying any restricted awards, maybe blah, 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 I thought we were going to move it in that direction, but this is, we did not.
We went back to DPI, and they said you cannot restrict in those other areas. Gender is the only one you can restrict in, and an example of that might be, you know, Female Athlete of the Year, Male Athlete of the Year. But that is the only area that we could actually make any kind of restrictions in.
So there cannot be a scholarship awarded that would be specifically for Hispanic students?
Again, I don't know that particular case, but this is what, this is the language they said that we had to use to, in order to clear that particular issue.
Yeah, I know, and I read their statement, and their grammar was worse than some of our fourth graders, but anyway.
I mean, our goal is simply to get through this particular.
Okay, I'm not going to vote against this or anything like that, but I guess, you know, quite simply, it doesn't seem appropriate, because I know that there are scholarships that are awarded elsewhere that are, for instance, for Hispanics, African Americans, American Indian. And what they're saying is we can't do that. I guess I don't understand that, but I can go along with this, but I think further study needs to be done on that one by somebody. And I'm a little bit disappointed with DPI not having cleared that up.
Thank you for that, Mr. Baumgart. Mr. McCaffrey.
I agree with you, Bill. I wonder if it's because, do we facilitate those?
Yes.
Sometimes, yes.
It could be an issue.
Our high schools do, yeah.
With who is distributing those.
It could be.
Because you're right, there's a lot of, you know, Italian-American societies that give scholarships to people of Italian descent, but I think that's because it's private.
That may be the reason, and I would anticipate that I'm correct about that, so, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Sue, would you call the roll?
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. The next one is revision to policy number 5113.1, Open Enrollment, and policy 5113.1G, Guidelines to Open Enrollment Program. State law requires school boards to act on changes to policies prior to the open enrollment application period, which begins in February. The criteria used are articulated in the attached policy language that was previously created with the support of Wasbe Legal Counsel, as well as direction from the Wisconsin Department of Public Education. Changes to this language include the removal of guaranteed automatic acceptance of non-residents regardless of class size, space, and/or staffing. These changes are noted in lines 31 to 32 of policy number 5113.1, and in addition to line 28 of number 5113.1G. To have these policies in effect immediately, we are asking that the requirement of two board meetings, two full board readings be waived tonight. So at this time, I move for a waiver of the two-reading requirement.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Just a clarification?
Yes.
So we have not had, this is, essence, is the first reading on this one? Okay, thank you.
I think before we approve it, we have to make the.
We have to waive the requirement. I know that.
So therefore, then we.
That's just a timing thing right now, because we have open enrollment coming up in February.
Right.
Right, and this is the information we got just recently, so we've just not had time to have a number of policy meetings or get it in front of the board multiple times.
But we still have, I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
But we have, we have to have. We have to vote on the motion to waive before we vote on the policy.
All right, could we have a motion to, all right, I move that.
It's already on the table, on the floor.
It's on the table, all right. And is it second? Okay.
Yes, it's second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll, please?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, passes six, zero. Now, I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart. All right, any discussion, comments? Okay, Mr. Como.
Yeah, I just wanted to have Jen maybe go through the.
This is just the policy language, but that's one particular speaking in this case.
Okay, okay, because, and what we're talking on is what the minimum number of.
Correct.
Students we would allow in from other districts to our school. Okay, okay. I'll wait for one more, one more policy.
Okay, anything else? All right, Sue, would you call the roll?
Joseph Como.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. Okay, open enrollment space ability for the 1415 school year. In addition to the policy changes, we are required to state the number of open seats at each grade level as shown in the chart provided, and that's this chart here. Wisconsin State Statute 118.5 parent 5A1 requires school boards to act on space availability annually at the regular board meeting in January. Due to the limitations of space at Whittier and Butler, both campuses are closed for both open enrollment and school choice. STEM acceptance is noted through lottery, and E-Achieve has unlimited open seats for application purposes due to the nature of virtual instruction. Please note that this chart sets the minimum number of seats available at each grade level given projected enrollment and staffing information, but does not limit the administration's ability to open more seats as they become available. I move for approval of the space availability chart as presented. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, but Jen, would you like to go over that with us?
Sure, just as you noted, and Joe was asking before, this is simply a chart to declare those minimum number of seats. Anything over and above, we would go to our policy guidelines, which lead us to develop a list. And then, as we're secure in our staffing plan, in our space planning, we can open up those seats and pull from that list following those guidelines. So again, this is simply to set a minimum. It shouldn't deter anyone from applying for the district. We often have plenty of space, and again, it just gives us that ability to cull that list and pull from that and place students as we have those seats available.
Okay, so going across where it says grade one, and then the last column, open seats capacity minus enrollment, it says zero. Could you explain that?
Sure, looking at the number of students that we're projecting to enter, which would be 766 when you look at what we're trying to keep our class sizes at and the number of FTE that we're projecting at this time, we don't have seats to give at that grade level.
Okay, so.
So again, these are simply projections. We're far in advance of our staffing, planning, and so it's kind of preemptive and very early, so you have to just set your minimums.
So therefore, at this time, there are no seats available in grades one and two, grades four, grades five, six, seven. Is that correct?
Six, seven, eight.
Pardon me?
Six, seven, eight.
Six, seven, eight.
Sure, that, again, that's the minimum I would project, just as last year. We saw a minimum like this chart very much last year with a lot of projected, no open positions, which when, again, that staffing gets finalized, when our enrollments truly come to bear, we did indeed have seats, and we called from that list, and we're able to place families and students in our district.
So this is just tentative.
Correct, very much.
And it's subject to change?
Correct.
Okay, how about the bilingual programs?
Again, the programming piece is very much looking at enrollment, staffing. None of those have been determined at this time. We're simply making projections, and we have to, by that law, have a minimum declared.
Okay. And special education?
Correct.
Both, okay. Wow. That's interesting, special education. Wow, very good. Okay, so moved and seconded that we approve the space availability chart as presented. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Sue, would you call the roll? Joe, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, you briefly had mentioned special education, but the people in the audience don't see the numbers that we see. We don't have any open seats for.
That's right.
Special education, so they're all zeros, and just the demand is very high. And that's, so I guess, you know, at first, when we started to discuss this and we were presented this, I guess it's a really good thing that we have to set these minimum numbers, because we really couldn't accept any students coming in, just because of where we're at with our own student needs. So I can start to see the purpose of how the law is written in the manner it is.
Right, and this would afford the district the protection, you know, knowing that we have a minimum of zero, we can still review that. Again, we had zeros last year, but we had some cases where we could accept. Again, we had zeros last year, but we had some cases where we could accept students. That depends on those needs, especially in special education. Those could be very high-cost needs. It just determines on what our capacity and availability is, which is very limited.
It looks like it's, right now, it's speech only, is that correct? Or is it all programs?
No, it's, the cross-categorical is in early childhood, 4K, 5K, first, second, those are the grades.
Okay.
That would be kind of cross-categorical service, but then, we have a separate line item for speech caseloads. Many, their predominant primary disability is speech only, and those have different caseload capacities.
But that's not to say that if someone was identified during the school year, that we would turn them down?
No, not at all.
Very good. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the approval for spaceability chart as presented. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Sue, would you call the roll?
Joseph Como.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Six zero, that completes the policy committee report. Okay, next, we're going to move into Technology Committee, presented by Patrick McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening.
Okay. There is no other business. Are we going to adjourn to?
Yes, we do. We do not need item A, but we do need item B.
Okay, so could we have a motion then? This brings the regular business meeting that we have scheduled for this evening to an end, and we're going to now go into executive session for other business. So, who would like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session? Joe, did you have your hand up to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
I move to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statute 19.84 parent one, parent C, to consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data on any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to consider administrative contracts.
Okay, thank you. And then, that ends our open part of our meeting, so we'll take a quick break.
The roll call vote.
Roll call, that's right. Thank you.
You need a second, I second it.
Okay, thank you for helping me. Sue.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.